Maybe 10, like 10 seconds. It's your 10 second warning. Okay, welcome everybody to the 5pm joint work session for the city council also acting as the RDA. We already did roll call in the first, first meeting and we'll go ahead and first just do a quick review of the agenda for tonight. We have some minutes to approve Councilmember Blair and Councilmember Hire. Hopefully you've had a chance to review your minutes. And then we have a request to be on the agenda. Bob Hunter from United Way will be joining us to talk about Weber County Housing and Homeless Systems programs. Next, then we'll have report from Planning Commission on the proposed rezone, which we've been, we've just been discussing in work session over the last few weeks. And then new business, proposed amendments to the council rules and norms. Followed by that, public comments, any questions or discussion on the agenda? Okay, with that, we will bring up Chair of the Sustainability Committee, Dan Bedford. Welcome, come on up to the front here. Should we get the mic on for you? There we go. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really more used to standing up and walking around. I'm a professor at Weber State in my day job, so. I know, I might actually, you never know, it might happen. Yeah, being tethered is a little strange, but thank you very much for having me here. My name is Dan Bedford. I am the Chair of the Ogden City Sustainability Committee. And this is our annual report for fiscal year 2024. And I'm very happy to have two of my committee in the room. Thank you very much for being here as well as our city liaison and city council liaison. So thank you very much for being here. We've done a lot this year. It's been a very busy year. Here is a list of the major accomplishments at the full committee level. Not on here is the fact that we meet every Thursday, every month on the last Thursday of each month at 4pm up on the top floor. So we met regularly every month last year. So we had 12 meetings at the full committee and several meetings of the recycling subcommittee, which we had to post because there was a quorum of the committee present at those meetings. In addition, we tabled at many public events. I'll go into detail in a moment on those. Our membership grew from four to 11, which has been huge because that's given us the people power to actually get stuff done. Consequently, we were able to reform our subcommittees because when there were only four of us, there wasn't much point. But once we got to six and then up to nine and now up to 11, we've got enough people to actually do something. So we formed into three subcommittees, the Energy Wise Ogden Subcommittee, the Recycling Subcommittee, and the EV Charging and Parking Subcommittee. We changed the committee name and the membership requirements via ordinance. So we're now the Sustainability Committee. We used to have a longer name. It was hard to remember and certainly harder to put on a T-shirt. So we, we got that door to T-shirts. That's right, standing next to each other. We wrote two letters to the mayor, both encouraging and thanking the mayor for their efforts. And this is the detail of the things that we did in terms of public events. We went to the farmer's market on two occasions, August 19th and September 9th. We went to the Intermountain Sustainability Summit on March 21st up at Weber State. We went to the Ogden Nature Center Earth Day event on April 20th and the Weber Basin Water Garden Fair on June 1st. We also went to every single one of the Twilight Concert Series thus far. So I attribute at least some of our success in growing the committee membership from four to 11 to our visible public presence at events like this. So it's really been positive. So thanks to the committee members who were there making it happen. At the subcommittee level, the recycling subcommittee organized a tour of West Side Integrated Material Resource Facility. So where our recycling actually goes. So the Chair of the Recycling Subcommittee organized a tour for committee members. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to go, but it sounded amazing. So I missed out. We implemented recycling efforts at the Twilight Concert Series and we have recovered over 300 pounds of recyclable materials thus far from those concerts. That's 87.93 pounds of bottles, glass bottles, 65.06 pounds of cans, 153.01 pounds of plastic cups. That totals actually about 306 pounds, but who's counting? We have also been gathering qualitative and quantitative data to inform potential future recycling efforts or policies. And here's a few images just to give you a sense of what it was like for us working at the Twilight Concert Series events. There we are flying the flag of Ogden City Sustainability Committee, but also doing something useful as well as promoting our existence to the public. There we are encouraging people to recycle their bottles, cans and cups. That was the end of the evening with a lot of plastic and glass and aluminium cans that we ended up putting in the big dumpster where it gets picked up and taken to a four said integrated waste management recycling facility. And one of the interesting things that, this was an event that I wasn't at, but there was an experiment conducted with really, really clear signage on one of the garbage cans, promoting it as a recycling bin. Not a place to dump garbage, but a place to put your recycling. So what, what was found was that clear signage of this sort leads to actually really clean recycling. And this is a quote from the Chair of the Recycling Subcommittee, Stephanie Vaughan. She said, with regards to this photo that I'm showing you here, attached is a photo I took from the first time we used the bin. Again, we did not moderate this bin or clean it during the event. We wanted to know how people used it. This is how clean the recycling was by adding incredibly clear signage. So it would appear, at least from an initial foray into this, that if we have really clear signage, we can encourage much reduced contamination of the recyclable stream. So fingers crossed that that continues to bear fruit. This is what's been going on with the EV Charging and Parking Subcommittee. They advised Ogden City Planning Department on best practices for residential EV charging requirements and locations. And in doing that, they reviewed past reports, investigated best practices nationally, drafted a new report, which they then discussed with and solicited feedback from the planning department. And information from that report was presented by Barton Breiley in a council work session. And revisions of that report and expansion of that report is currently in progress. The Energy Wise Ogden Subcommittee, we organized a roundtable event for local businesses, which is one of the steps presented in the Energy Wise Ogden Strategic Implementation Plan. And the purpose of that was to raise awareness of energy efficiency incentives. We worked with Ogden City Business Development to pull this off. We got participation from Utah Clean Energy who came and presented, also representative from Thermwise and What Smart Business Programs, Energy Auditors from KW Engineering and Intermountain Industrial Assessment Center were there to make their services available for energy audits. And local businesses who participated included Grounds for Coffee and Beehive Cheese. And that was held back on February the 26th. We do still have some challenges, many challenges actually, but the biggest challenge is committee time. We are a volunteer committee. We're doing it because we really are concerned about the issues and that we want to make a difference in our community. But we all have busy lives, families, kids, work, all the rest of it. So committee time is always going to be a challenge. Hiring a sustainability coordinator who works directly between us and Ogden City has been the single most impactful action taken by the city when it comes to sustainability efforts so far, I would say, in my view. So that's one of our big challenges. Another big challenge is priorities and direction. What are the most pressing sustainability issues on which the committee can make a contribution? So if there are things that you think we should be working on, we want to know. In fact, it would be very helpful if you could, if you could let us know. Goals for the upcoming year. We will continue to act as a resource for city council and the mayor on any topics that arise throughout the year. And at the subcommittee level, for the recycling subcommittee, they will refine the Twilight Concert Series recycling efforts so that they can run autonomously. The idea would be to try and recruit a recycling crew that's not committee members necessarily, but volunteers. So that we'd have a really robust recycling effort at the Twilight Concert Series. The EV Charging and Parking Subcommittee will aim to provide meaningful input to the code process on EV Charging and Parking. And at the Energy Wise Subcommittee, we are going to continue to pursue the goals outlined in the Energy Wise Ogden Strategic Implementation Plan. So those are our goals for the coming year. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that presentation. I don't know if there's any questions or comments or discussion. Councilmember Trubka, go ahead and start.
Well, I just want to say how much I appreciate all of your work and all of this and recruiting so many new people and definitely thank you to Lorenzo as well. But I was really excited when I went to Twilight and I saw the recycling table there and saw that that was me implemented. So I hope that it continues to be really successful. I think the only thing I can think of off the top of my head that we hear a lot about in the community is water and water use and landscaping. And so I think, you know, if that's an area of interest for the committee, that's definitely an area of interest for the committee members for sure.
Okay, thank you. That's very useful, very helpful to know.
Councilmember Hire.
Yeah, to, to go about that, you know, the, the water thing. I, I called Lorenzo a month ago, whatever it was. And it suggested that to get the best bang for the buck, you know, we, with, with water savings. You know, we, we helped to fund those water barrels, which save a little water. But for the same amount of money, we could have helped people buy smart sprinkler controllers that save tons of water. And I think that, you know, that's kind of what I would expect from your committee is to do some of the analysis of what do we get spending, what are we spending and what do we get out of it? I think those kinds of things are really important to know. But yes, I do appreciate your efforts in this and, and we've got a guy from the north end out there, Jules. Say goodbye. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's also very helpful, very useful to know.
I, I too want to thank you guys for doing what you're doing. I, I like your goals for this year. I think the only other thing that I hear is and it's mostly because of the smoke, but you know, air quality. But so though I, I don't know where that fits in there. I'm going to the league conference tomorrow and there's some conference about, I had to write it down. Learning how our community can use federal tax credits for clean energy and admissions reduction. Is that something that you were aware of? Okay, all right. Then I won't go to that one if you, if you already know. But again, thank you. I, I'm glad the name has changed. And yeah, and I think the thing that is really, really fun to hear is that I think through a little bit of education and, and the right education, that people want to do the right thing. And so you guys are hitting on the right thing to do. So I've been to those Twilight concerts. They're, they're a little bit raucous. So yeah, so good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And I think last year we heard a little bit of discussion about the, the implementation of the every other week with the recycling. And just one of the common themes or the most common question at the, at the farmer's markets was, you know, when is, I think that was one of the questions, when, when do we do this, you know, and, and being a little bit surprised that the information hadn't gotten out. Are you seeing that? Is that still one of the questions you're getting at the farmer's markets? Or what would you say? How, how are those conversations going?
Yeah, I, I haven't had too many of those questions. Other committee members who've been at the farmer's markets, has that been coming up much?
Do you mind just coming up and we'll share a mic here. So with those online can hear you, go ahead and just go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Jonathan Nelson. I live here in Ogden and I'm a member of the Sustainability Committee. And last year I gave the presentation and
That's right.
We had given, done a lot of tabling at the farmer's markets. That was a pretty common concern that we had. I haven't heard that much this year, but we also haven't done any farmer's markets. We're doing one either this weekend or next weekend.
This weekend.
So I guess I, I haven't heard anything, but the people who go to Twilight might be
Different.
Different than the people.
Okay, sounds good. Perfect. Okay, thank you, Lorenzo. One, please, thank you for being here. Thank you, Dan, for that presentation. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just steal just a minute or two here just to address what you were talking about with any grant money. I'll take a look at that here. Thank you.
Can you remember the whole name of it?
Yes. So one thing that we've been working on for the past year related to tax credits and things of that nature, there's, there's a grant program and it's called the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. And Ogden City qualified for $145,720 of, of formula funding basically. And so there was a couple of categories that we could have chosen, but one of the things that we kept hearing, you know, in council meetings or from community members was about electrification, right, of our fleet or just generally people buying EVs in the community. And is the city looking into that? And so we said, okay, let's take this money and let's develop an EV fleet pilot program. And so we've been working on our application. Last year we submitted it in April and we just got it approved just a couple of weeks ago. So with that money, what our plan is, is to get three electric vehicles for our fleet. One will be for our planning department. One will be in PD and fire as an admin vehicle. And then the other will be a fleet and facilities pool vehicle. So we'll get three EVs plus chargers and then the installation costs as well with that money. And so hopefully just depending on how long the bid process takes and things of that nature, you know, we'll make some good progress now that we've been approved to move forward. We should be able to start making progress on the purchases and installation during the, you know, waning months of the year. So just that's one thing that we've been doing. I just wanted to give an update that, you know, we, we've been working on that and we are approved. So fleet electrification is a work in progress and we'll also take that data. We're going to be monitoring data. Once we get everything installed and purchased, we'll look at fueling costs, maintenance costs, and just any quirks of having electric vehicles in our fleet. And we'll use that data basically just to inform future fleet electrification efforts.
Do, do some of those funding sources need matching dollars?
Some do.
And do we put any aside for that?
Some do. We, this particular program did not require a match. So thus far, we haven't encountered that, but we also haven't had those discussions yet just because we haven't pursued any grants that would require a match for that type of thing yet.
Councilmember Blair.
I'll say before Councilmember Trubka does, but that's awesome. I think a lot of us have been asking for just, just a like just to dip our toe in.
Yeah.
To that, that realm. And so I applaud that you, you took the initiative to do that and, and, and the very minimal risk way to do that. So I think it's wonderful and I'm excited to hear where the data leads us to and if it allows us to pursue more.
Councilmember Trubka, did you want to second that or add to that?
Second that and say, you know, Lorenzo's proving out our point that a sustainability coordinator would kind of pay for themselves in the long run, you know, these great benefits that bring our city. So I appreciate it very much.
Councilmember Hire.
Sorry to chime in again. I, I don't like to take more than one turn, but, but I do have a suggestion and a request. You know, I, I'm on the county's solid waste committee and we're always looking at recyclables, recycling, you know, where to take our blue cans, where, where to take that stuff. And you mentioned you went to Wasatch Integrated and was very enlightened by that. I think there's, I can only speak for myself, but I'm suspicious of recycling locations that they really are recycling. And if you all could do some deep diving on some of those kinds of things, I, I know that the formerly recycled earth is, is got a new owner and a new mission and a new, it would be really nice if you guys could go out there and find out how that stream is being processed and, and, and help us to understand that a little better. That would be, that'd be great, I think.
Yeah, definitely. We'll, we'll take, I took note of that here and then, yeah, we'll bring that back to the committee for sure.
We've got some thumbs up from the committee too. So that's great. All right. Thank you, Lorenzo.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we'll bring, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Lorenzo, I think when we, right after we hired you, we talked about doing some sort of strategic plan or five-year plan to kind of help know what some of the goals are farther out. And I'm wondered if you're working on that or if we need to help, help with some money for a consultant or something like that.
We have been working on basically launching a, I, I came a couple of months back and talked about, you know, city sustainability planning, what that could look like. And from what I heard from, from the council and also in other conversations with city administration was that we want to start with a sustainability plan or whatever that may be called for our city operations first. And so we have been working, you know, together to basically launch this planning process, make sure that we get all the right people included, make sure that we're really holistic about how we're going about it and making sure that it's tailored to what really matters for the city as far as our operations go. And so we are in the, the process of doing that early, early stages, but, but we are working on that.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Okay. Up next, Taylor Nelson from our Deputy Public Services Deputy Director and City Engineer, here to talk to us about the sewer master plan.
I'll still this mic real quick. Chair Ritchie, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to talk about the sewer master plan. As you all know, whenever I get the opportunity to talk about plans, I am thrilled to tell you guys. So please let me know if I'm giving too much detail or not enough. Grateful to have Cliff Linford, who is a Vice President at Sunrise Engineering here with us. Sunrise Engineering helped us do the latest update to the master plan. They did the master plan that I know that some of the members of the council have reviewed that we did back in 2013 and some other subsequent amendments. So we're here to go through some of the updates we've been able to go through and, and propose the plan to your group at an upcoming meeting. So I'm going to turn some time over to Cliff and have him go through some of these slides.
Thanks, Taylor, and I appreciate the opportunity to do the master plan update and also present to you guys at the council today. And I'm, feel free to ask questions as we go. As Taylor mentioned, we could go very much in detail and be here all night, or we can go fairly quickly and answer the questions that you guys have. So feel free to interrupt me and answer questions as we're going through each slide. I'm comfortable with that. So what is the goal of the master plan? So a sanitary sewer master plan provides a key understanding of the system in its whole. How does it work? Where does the flows go? Where do, where do they end up? It's also used to analyze the flows in the system. As you guys are aware, that not only does the indoor water usage go to the sewer system, but you also have inflow from storm events. You also have groundwater that influences the sewer. And all those need to be accounted for. When you analyze the system, do we have capacity? And the main goal is looking at how the system works, what is the flows in the system to identify what needs do we have in the system? What capacity issues do we have? What capacity issues do we see in the future? So we can plan for those events. Now Ogden City Sewer System is a very large sewer system. If you look at all the lineal footage of pipe in the sewer system, you are over 279 miles of pipe. You have over 5,000 manholes, two lift stations, which is actually amazing for the system of your size to only have two lift stations. Usually systems have a lot more. One of the benefits is the Central Weber Treacher Sewer. There's a number of outfalls that we fall into their system, so which allows us to avoid a lot of lift stations and costly maintenance of those lift stations. Now, one of the drawbacks of the system is that it's an older system. Over 75% of the system is 45 years or older. The flows on the system vary quite a bit seasonally and day to day. It ranges from about 10,000 gallons a minute to 17,300 gallons a minute. And when you're looking at the sewer system and the size of it, just to kind of get another number in your mind, if you were to build this sewer system today, at today's construction rates, it would cost you over 1.4 billion to put this system into place. So it is a large system and it does require a lot of maintenance on, on the system. I understand a lot of these maps that you will see are a little bit hard to understand on the presentation, but it is included in the master plan report. This is just a map of your overall system shown by pipe diameter. It also shows where you outfall to Central Weber. You also take some inflow from some other cities and outflow to some other cities as well. So it shows all the locations of where you receive the sewer and where your sewer goes to. That map does not.
Do you want us to go back to that map real quick? Do you have any questions about that one? The one that we have is out at the Northern Utah Correctional Center. So right there off of 24th. And the other one is, why am I spacing the other one?
I'm blanking on the other one myself.
BDO.
BDO.
It is at the BDO.
And, and they are two very, they're very small lift stations. They're basically serving a couple of, a couple of areas at all.
Four Mile Creek is a great barrier out there in the BDO for us.
Thank you, Justin Taylor. One of the major components of this master plan update is from the previous master plan, we were able to understand the system better and understand where all the flows were going to. We were able to put seven meters within the system that we left in place during the year of 2022 for the entire season to be able to understand the flows into the system. These seven meter locations metered approximately 70, 92% of the total system. As you can see, depending on the season, February to May, it averaged about 9,800 gallons a minute. June through October, when the groundwater arises and increased with the inflow and infiltration to about 17,000 gallons a minute. And then started tapering off in the fall to 13,000 gallons a minute. We also looked at the indoor water usage because obviously in a perfect world, the only wa, only sewer that would be going to the sewer system would be your indoor water usage, what you flush down the toilet, when you're down the sink, dishwater, that type of thing. But sewer systems also take water from the groundwater, inflow and infiltration. In fact, a system of your guys' age, back when they were first putting these systems in, a lot of them were a dual storm and sanitary sewer. They were trying to dilute the pollution by allowing some water into the system. So it wasn't originally a watertight system like we like to have it today. So we analyzed that and, you know, in a perfect world, your base flow would be only 5,800 gallons a minute. The rest of it is accounted for in infiltration and inflow. In fact, it ranges from about 40% to 60% of your total flow is non-sewer. It's it's groundwater for the most part. We, this is just a graph that shows the year 2022, the fluctuation. You can see it fluctuates not only daily of the usage, but it fluctuates seasonally as well. So we not only analyzed what your current system is doing and what flows that you have, we also looked at what the department environment quality requires on new sewer systems. They require for interceptors and outfalls, a 250 gallons per capita per day capacity. And an interceptor and outfall is basically your larger transmission lines where you have multiple collector lines that tie into and, and feed the system. On the smaller lines, eight inch lines that are in typical subdivisions, they require 400 gallons per capita per day. And the theory behind that is the, the more connections that you have in, in, on a line, the less likelihood that all those toilets are going to be flushed at the same time. And we call it a Super Bowl flush. It's probably usually peak when everybody's using it as once. And the more connections that you have, the less likely that they're going, all going to happen at once. So when you look at the smaller lines within a subdivision, they want to see a higher peak to account for the likelihood of everybody using it at once. As I mentioned previously, we also needed to account for inflow and infiltration, especially in an older system, you know, it can account as much as 50 to 60% of the entire system. You know, Ogden City is continually trying to identify where the INI is coming from and trying to remove it from the system. A number of projects that we had from the previous master plan identified some of the, the lower hanging fruit, I would say, the ones that we knew that were causing issues. And we were able to either reline those pipelines or replace them in its entirety. And we did a quick comparison between the 2014 INI study and the 2022 master plan. And what we found was very encouraging that the projects that we've done over the last 10 years have worked, have met the goal that we were trying to achieve. And we had an overall INI reduction to the system of approximately 31%, which is accounts for five to eight million gallons per day, which was outstanding for the projects that, that we had put together for the project.
So probably just to note, that was otherwise affluent that was going to the treatment plant and getting treated. And because we've been proactive in some of these projects, identifying other storm and in some cases, these groundwater connections, that no longer hits that system and we're taking care of it otherwise. And so we feel like that's a significant savings, not just to Ogden, but the community as a whole. And so that's where we feel like by being proactive and taking advantage of some of these projects that we're able to better serve the entire area and provide some more capacity, otherwise in the plant that always seems to have to continue expanding and getting bigger. So we're trying to bring our numbers down.
Taylor, if I, if I might ask a, a question about that is, I, I know Ogden is the oldest community in the, in the sewer proven district, but I don't know how much older I guess really is. I, I know that there's I don't know how much older, I guess, really is. I I know that there's, we've taken a little bit of heat from some of our neighboring cities that are on the in the district that we got way too much INI and we should be paying more. And and they're pressing that issue to some extent. But we don't have any data to prove it one way or the other, right? And I I maybe you do. That's why I'm asking, is there some information that we could kind of bring to the table that?
So this is specifically why we've been doing some of these inflow and infiltration studies. These significant reductions that we're showing, like a thirty-one percent reduction is massive. Um, I would argue that no other city in the surrounding area comes close to what we're doing to remove and take care of INI. In fact, I know of some other cities, and I know we're in a public setting, so I won't say which, but continue to connect their uh storm drain systems or some of their detention basins directly into the sewer. And that's still happening. And that's happening because they're trying to take uh some of their stuff off of the flooding requirements we've been talking about. So for other cities to say that and then not specifically have their own plans and their own measurements to do, I think that's the other problem is you have a lot of of other cities that don't have the same studies that we do and probably may not be taking it as seriously as we are. But they can't show that they've been doing any work on reducing any of their INI. All they've been doing is growing their systems. So I think we've instituted more strict standards and requirements. We've come back and had projects that have had those same requirements. We've done a whole bunch of lining projects. Because I think we've been dedicated to try and remove some of these connections to the system allows us to show that we've had a significant removal. The other thing that I would argue is not a lot of other areas or cities are metering their flow the same way that we are. So originally, when we put some meters in place, like Cliff mentioned, we got to about forty or fifty percent of the flow. That was back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And we were able to get all the way up to about ninety-three percent of all of the outfall. So for an area as large as Ogden with as many outfalls as we have to account for ninety-three percent of our outfall is not something that you would generally see from a lot of these other small areas. They're just used to saying, we have our affluent, we're going to send it down the way, and someone else is always the problem.
Just to clear up my question, um, the way you're calculating uh INI is based on how much water people are using in the winter months. That that's the average flow that they have. That's what should be going into the sewer.
Let me go back to this slide right there.
Okay.
So as we've put in these meters, actually, Cliff, do you want to explain the data specifically on what we've done? Because this is meter flow data from across the city. And so you'll see some of these different ones. In fact, that interesting peak over there where it shows one seventeen twenty-three, we'll talk about that very last, but we'll explain how this data works probably real quick, and this I think will be helpful.
So you are correct. What we did on the base flow is we took the the three month average for your indoor water usage. So we took um December, January and February, where we're not having any outdoor watering and all your water flow should be indoor water usage. We calculated that for the for the system and it came out to be the five thousand eight hundred and twelve gallons per minute, as you can see on that that lower graph there. Then we took the average, because obviously you got your peak fluctuations for each um day as it goes up and down. But the INI is the meter data minus the indoor water usage that we calculated in in the winter months. And you can see the INI does fluctuate seasonally, you know, in the in the summer months, when the groundwater comes up, you can see a spike in in the flows. Um, what was very interesting in the twenty twenty, actually it was twenty twenty-three, that we captured January in twenty twenty-three, you see that huge spike in twenty twenty-three. Now, I don't know if you guys remember in January of twenty-three is we had a lot of early snows. We had a high um snowfall, high um snowpack on the ground and within the city limits. And then it warmed up really warm in the end of January, and we had a lot of local flooding associated with that. And a lot of that water ended up in the sewer system through inflow. Now, that event is very untypical. Um, usually you don't see that that spike that we did in January, but we we did for that year for that seasonal anomaly. So you can see the the meter data versus what the indoor water usage is, is where the INI calculations come in at.
And and then as we've been taking on projects and comparing the data, that's where we're getting the reductions in the values. So and and that's where we get really excited about watching the data and seeing, oh, it rained. And so we can start tying rains into peaks on the meters. And so it's the stuff that Cliff said, we don't want you to get into details on, but we get really excited about. So.
Oh, I'm sorry to have asked that. I I'm kind of a geek about that.
Absolutely. I'm happy to go into that in more detail with you.
We can nerd out anytime you want.
But but that was a great question. Thank you.
Right. Besides the INI and the actual info that you're receiving, we also need to analyze what's going to happen in the future. You know, what's your population increase is going to be so we can size a future sewer lines for that or to see if in the future, some of the lines that are good capacity today will be i- issues in the future. Um, as you can see, there's a variety of methods to project that future population. Um, we came up with about a hundred six thousand for build out. You can see a couple of other methods came around the same number, but we accounted for that build out and the modeling of the pipelines as well. So I mentioned previously, we modeled a number of different scenarios, the two hundred fifty and the four hundred gallon per capita per day scenarios to analyze the different collector pipes and interceptor pipes in the system and looked at the capacity of the system currently. Um, the the red is where you're actually trying to pressurize the line a little bit, where you have potential to back up sewer. The um orange is you're about three quarters full on the pipe. So for day to day, you're okay, but sometimes you get those peak storm events that you might pressurize the line on. And then the blue are just lines that we're kind of near capacity that we want to look at. Um, we have about twelve lines or twelve capital improvement projects that we're watching fairly closely that were, we put in the program to start being replaced or upsize. We also wanted to look at Make Ogden. Um, they were working on this plan concurrently with the the sewer master plan. Uh, once we finished the bulk of the sewer master plan, we dove into the Make Ogden Plan in a little bit more detail. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the plan, but we looked at the twenty-seven undeveloped lots in the downtown area. We evaluated those lots of what potentially could be built there. Um, we analyzed them as ERCs or equivalent residential connections. How many homes would that be if they were homes? And estimated the flow from from this area if we redensify downtown. When we did that, we did identify five new capacity related projects that we added into the master plan. Um, this is just a map that kind of shows where those lines um started to turn red and blue and orange once we added the additional flows. Now, one of these lines, and Taylor can help me on on which one they're doing right now, um, they're actually working on right now.
Yeah, we are working on the twenty-first street improvement. So that's the construction as they're uh upsizing and taking care of that sewer. And we're doing that one right now. So that's a project that's ongoing. We know that'll be a large benefit going forward and a lot of these other projects, but these projects represent projects that weren't in the last master plan. And we thought it was important to include that density and take that into account, especially going forward. So yeah, we've we've started with twenty-first, and so we hope to have that one wrapped up here pretty soon, and we're excited to start adding some of these other ones.
We then met with the city staff. There's also a number of maintenance projects that we needed to look at, you know, areas in the sewer system that from a modeling standpoint, they have capacity, but they have root intrusion, they have pest intrusion that the city staff is working on weekly, monthly, in order to keep that line functioning. So we took into account not only the capacity, but maintenance of the system as well. And we broke those, uh, well, we put a put together priority list, and then we broke it into five, ten, fifteen and twenty year plans. And this provides us a solid guideline for the CIP planning and funding of the projects. Again, this is just a map that shows the location of not only the capacity projects, but the maintenance projects as well. Um, from these projects, you know, we obviously put a cost to it. Um, we identified fifty-five million dollars with improvements to the sewer system, thirty-seven of those million is capacity projects, eighteen million is maintenance projects, and then two hundred thousand to continue the INI study to identify the areas that we can improve on um reducing the flows to the system. We also met with city staff to see what funding was available. Obviously, fifty-five million dollars within the next five years is probably an overreach and it's probably a little overkill for the situation that your system is in. Um, we looked at what's currently programmed for the sewer system, and it was three point five million dollars per year. We thought that fit well with the current plan and the current needs. So the first five years, you know, seventeen point five million toward the sewer projects. We did add an inflationary um dollar amount to that in increasing years um to account for inflation and the cost of the project. Sorry. Um, obviously, those numbers are, we're not asking for those numbers at this time. As we get closer to the five, ten, fifteen year plan, you know, we'll look at those numbers, reevaluate the costs, reevaluate what has been done, and then approach the council for any rate increases that we see at that time.
And and that's why we think it's so important to have these continual update meetings and discussions. So we've tried to plan out as far as what we thought was responsible to plan out. Um, so you're probably seeing some big dollar items up here, but like we said earlier, on a one point four billion dollar system, that's that's probably seems like an insignificant cost comparatively to keep that asset moving forward. So the the proposal, all we have at this time is to continue in the direction we're going. We we may come back in the future and ask for some other changes. We're just waiting to see what's happening, but we we have noticed an increase in construction cost. We have noticed an increase in a lot of other items that have been going on as far as projects are concerned, but we feel like um because of some of the proactive steps we've been able to take, we've been able to solve a lot of issues that we otherwise would have had by kind of staying with these plans and following through on our capital projects.
So I think Taylor summarized it fairly well. I think overall, the system for the age that it is, is in very good shape. Um, with a lot of the projects that you've been doing over the last ten years, um, obviously, there's a lot more to do, just based on the size and the age of the system. But our recommendation is to continue the plan that you've been following and be monitoring it, updating this plan, you know, every five years to make sure you're on on top of everything.
One more question. Um, yeah. You you mentioned, uh, you know, homes being built with uh that are that are just ejecting groundwater into the into the sewer system. Um, what are we doing? Do we have an ordinance in place or do we have something in in uh our inspectors? Are they are they on this thing where if there's ever a house being built that there is, there is a sump designed into the into the
So
building?
Yeah, so Central Weber has the requirements for what you can do with sumps and everything else. We're following Central Weber's um requirements. So when they set out items for sumps or even for fat soils and grease, we are following their rules and requirements. We're trying to find an alternate pathway for it to go. Whether that go down the storm drain, a land drain, other alternative like that, we're trying to make sure that as we develop, we're finding what some of those alternatives are or can be, so that not everything ends up down the sewer.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much. This comes to us on the seventeenth of September, so we come up with any other thoughts between now and then? We can get those to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have about fifteen minutes left. We'll at this point invite to have an administrative update and invite Mayor Brown and Justin Anderson to come up and however you want to take that time.
These are new.
Welcome.
Yeah. They look nice. Uh, Chair Ritchie, members of the council, thank you um for inviting us up here. Um, one of the things um we are looking at has to deal with the interactions that we've been having between trail use and and our golf course. And I know that there's been uh a lot of comments or you've heard a lot from the community. Um, so we have taken steps to to look at the interactions that that we're having. Um, we've got, of course, Todd Brinkman and and Monty Stewart here that can handle that firsthand, but we've got people who are are leading the trails on on a quite continual basis and and actually, as we've gotten looked into it, they are crossing all over the golf course. And we're having a lot of interactions between members or or people who are paying to to golf and and having interactions with the public on the golf course. And that includes people walking, people running, people riding bicycles. And so um, and I even had an interaction with with my son as we were out playing one day where I thought my son was going to hit somebody that had, after he hit the shot, came out in front of him. And so um barely barely missed the the individual that came out in front of him. So we talked to Todd and and Todd explained that the the number of incidents or or near incidents that we were having. And so then we started looking into that, but we we noticed that there were fences being cut. There were people, once they got on the course, that were riding in areas like on the greens, um, other things like that with bikes. And so we wanted to just say, hey, let's stop um right now and let's, we reminded people to stay on the trails, but we want to get a a handle on what's happening um between why why people are leaving the trails to go through the golf course. Um, and understand that and then see what alternatives we can do that would be able to um allow if if people, if if they need to to get to a certain point, what could be worked out to to allow that to be done safely. And so those are the things that we're looking to to study.
Very good. Thank you for that update. Um, I think Dave, if you're still online, I don't know if you had any comments. Um.
Yeah, thank you. And and maybe um Todd Brinkman could speak to this, or you too, Justin. I am for golfers that pay a greens fee that might run fifty bucks. Uh, being able to go out on the golf course and enjoy playing golf. And those that are on council that are golfers, you could feel free to make a contribution here, too. Um, Todd, what kind of feedback are you getting in the clubhouse from golfers uh coming in, having encountered dog walkers and runners and hikers and cyclists and so on and so forth? What kind of feeling can you share with us about their perception of their golf experience with those factors coming into play?
Um, thanks. That's a, that's a great question. I think by and large, the most common question I get is why is this the only place this ever happens? Because these people play a lot of golf, you know, up and down the Wasatch Front. They play at our other course, El Monte. And so that's probably the if I had to narrow it down to the most popular ask, it would be why here? And so, you know, obviously, um, I'm out to protect the interests of these players. I mean, they're paying a a premium fee to play at our facility, and I'm also concerned about their safety out there because I'm an avid trail user myself. And so yeah, that's that's the most popular thing is why, why wouldn't we're paying a fee? I had I had one even interaction with the customer recently I hadn't seen for a while. And I says, hey, wow, how come I haven't seen you up to Mount Ogden lately? And he just told me point blank, he was not paying fifty dollars to play in a dog park. So if I could solve that problem, then um he would be back. But yeah, it's they they just always ask why here and why is this the only place this ever happens?
Do you think it's impacting the golf course as a business for the community?
Well, you know, golf is at a twenty-five year high in rounds played. I mean, golf has been surging since COVID. And trail use, uh, Monty would have to speak more to this, but I know as an avid trail user, trail use has been spiking. So I think it's you've got two things that are on on a growing trend that it it's brought more attention to it for sure.
Okay, and just to kind of respond to Justin's question and yours too, why here? And as far as the traverse from twenty ninth to thirty-sixth, I think it's just because of past practice. Uh, even before, I've had people say that even before a golf course, that was the Bureau of Reclamation Pipeline Road. And they used it. And then the golf was, golf course was built and they continued to use it. Um, does that resonate with anybody else in the room? Does that make sense?
You know, one, one thing and I can say is I, what I do know is ever since the golf course was built back in the eighties, and this was built before I ever was here at the city, is that it has been signed and had signed. is that it has been signed and had signs up to tell people to sta- you know, kind of stay off the golf course and to to stay on the trails. And and since that time, we've also had uh more trails improved around the golf course. Um but as far as before that time, how it was used, I I don't feel like I could answer that.
Okay, so since we toured in the golf cart, you and I and Monty, I have quit walking the dog on the golf course and instead have taken Gibbs Loops Trail. And it it's pretty direct. Um it isn't a lot of added footsteps to get, you know, from my house anyway, on the south or on the north to the south. It's not that far and it's really a pretty easy trail. It's not a lot of uphill. And I think with some improvement and some signage, I think we could change some habits.
Yeah, and I know our our trail um individuals, Monty and and our trails committee have worked really hard to be able to have good trails, good foot traffic trails and and bike trails and be able to separate them in areas that they need to be separated. And so and recently, they just got done doing about two, three weeks worth of work of of trail improvement to Gibbs Loop Trail. And so I I think as we continue to do that, um we are all very pro trail. We've done a lot of trail improvements in the community. Um since since I've been here, um all over, both in the north and the the south of the city and through the city, um we'd like to to see that continue to happen, but we we do recognize that the interactions that are happening between people cutting across the golf course and the the people playing keep happening more and more and more.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I guess what's your plan going forward?
So right now, um we're, we've been evaluating and watching and and, you know, we've been out trying to talk to people who we we see going through the golf course and and understand and ask them why, you know, what 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 brings them to go through here and maybe not to go on other routes. The other thing we're working on doing is is creating signage and make sure that we have other areas where people are are coming onto the golf course um is properly signed so that they know that this is, this is a golf course and there are, you know, people will be playing golf. Um we we did have some other signs that had been up. Some of them had been removed. We'll get those signs back up. But I think for the the time being, one, we just want to make people aware. And then we also want to look at the possibility of, is there uh any way that we could actually allow the public to to cross through the golf course, that they're not actually going across fairways or across greens or tee boxes? Because the 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 issue isn't um that there's, they have golf carts or people walking, interacting. The issue is when people are hitting and all of a sudden, somebody after they hit a golf ball comes out in front of them. Um we just want to make sure that that happens safely. So we want to take some time and evaluate. Is it possible to to have a crossing go through? And and if so, how much is that going to cost? And would those improvements actually be spent doing something different too? And so we want to evaluate all that.
So I assume most of the illegal activity on the golf course happens probably early in the morning and late at night, I'm I'm assuming.
Actually, it's going on at all times.
All times. So do we have, I mean, like if if a marshal is out, do they, and they see somebody walking their dogs, do we stop them, talk to them?
Yes, the mar- the marshals will, and most of the time, what'll happen is you'll get, you'll get them, uh you'll get a little bit of a mix. Hey, I've always done this and I'm going to continue to do it. Or, hey, no problem. I totally get it. They'll get back to the trail, but then the very next day, they're in the same place. So they they say, yeah, no problem. But then, so the marshals have felt a little bit powerless in this situation, but we are trying to just encourage them to just educate folks that, hey, we're concerned about your safety. Let's work our way back to the trail and be very peaceful in that interaction.
Well, we we've hoped that through proper education, that, you know, that we could get to a point that we would, you know, people would kind of self, you know, educate and 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 follow the rules that way. So um but we're we're just seeing more and more trail use, which is fantastic. I mean, we 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 want to see that. Um but we also, we we run a golf course and we, you know, there's an expectation on us to run it and to be profitable and to have a good golf experience. And those two worlds are colliding.
We've got Monty here. We didn't, we just short a little bit, a few more minutes here to go, but welcome, Monty.
Yeah, I I I know some of you received an email that I just sent a few minutes ago, but um yeah, we we're going to continue to look at, um I mean uh other options like Justin was saying, but also, um you know, I'll continue to look for other courses, but I I haven't found any that would really allow people to cross the fairway and knowingly put them in in harm's way. So um that's just one thing that I'm going to continue to to look at. And then um and then, you know, not not just the the crossing into the golf course, but up up there in the Twenty Ninth Street and Gibbs Loop area, some some other um areas where we have people that have begun making their own trails, you know, and we're always trying. That's going to be a constant battle, but we'll we'll keep doing that and work on signage, so.
Thank you. All right, sounds like we still have a lot to learn and maybe we can work together to get this all figured out, so.
Yeah, that's what we would like to do.
Yeah. Deputize Councilmember Blair. Yes. Yes. Dave, you have your hand raised. Is there another comment you have?
Oh, no, I didn't take it down. Sorry.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you. All right. With that, anything else brief? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn and uh to our city council meeting at six P M.